Praise the Lord. This morning as I look at you, I see you much more refreshed and revived than what I saw last morning.
You would have had a good night's rest and also you would have had a very good breakfast this morning.
I believe that you would have had a good night's rest and also you would have had a very good breakfast this morning. I am not very sure as to what kind of breakfast you had this morning, but I am sure that breakfast will keep you strong and alert during these first two sessions of the Bible study this morning. Since you have already received physical nourishment, now we are going into spiritual nourishment. And in order to nourish us spiritually, we need to feed upon the word of God. So we are going to begin by reading our theme verse for this youth camp. I hope you remember yesterday morning, I gave you some conditions. That is, we are going to read the theme verse 2 Corinthians 6:17 and 18 together. And then also the second condition, we reminded that the Bible passages, we are going to turn and read it joyfully, meaningfully and loudly. And thirdly, we are going to take down notes in our notebook. So these three conditions apply even for today. Okay, then let us begin by reading second book of Corinthians, chapter 6, verses 17 and 18. Yes, we are going to remind ourselves the meaning and the relevance of this theme, come out and be separate. During yesterday's Bible study session, we considered two of those headings. We considered the principles of separation. We looked at three principles given there in the word of God. We saw that firstly, we are separated from God and unless that separation has been reconciled, we cannot go on any further in this theme. Then we also considered the second principle that we need to be separated unto God. Because God is calling us saying, "Come out and be separate." And we saw that God is calling us with a seven-fold calling of separation to be separated unto God. Then thirdly, we also considered that we need to be separated for God. And that is our commitment. And it is that third point being separated for God that we are going to continue in these studies and elaborate and discuss. And then we looked at the second heading and that is, what is it? I can only hear psh psh psh. What is it? Oh yes, preciousness of separation. There we were looking at the preciousness of separation from God's point of view, from God's side of this story. And firstly, we understood that God is prescribing separation. Separation is prescribed by the Lord. And secondly, we also considered that separation is performed by the Lord himself. We mentioned that separation is difficult for man, so God takes the initiative of performing that separation. We looked at two important words. Do you remember those two words? Separated you from, separated from you. Then thirdly, we saw that separation is also purposed by the Lord. And that purpose is so that we may be known as his own. So since now I understand that you are, you can still remember what we considered yesterday, we are going to move on to our third heading this morning. Under this heading, the price of separation, we are going to look at separation from man's point of view. How separation applies to you and me personally? The relevance, the application, the implication of separation in our lives. Now in order to understand the price of separation and the human point of view of it. We need to read a Bible passage from the Old Testament. And that is Numbers, chapter 6, verses 1 to 8. Numbers, chapter 6, verses 1 to 8, we are going to read. And now this time, we are going to read it responsibly. So the brothers are going to start reading Numbers, chapter 6, verse 1, and sisters continue verse 2, then brothers 3, sisters 4, like that. Numbers, chapter 6, 1 to 8 responsibly between brothers and sisters. So let us see who is going to read loud and well. Will it be the brothers or will it be the sisters? That will decide whether this is a youth meeting or whether this is a sisters meeting. Okay, number 6, 1 to 8, brothers start. Okay, in the passage of scripture that we read now, we find there was a separation known as the Nazarite separation in the Old Testament. That was a special kind of calling of separation. And as we read about the Nazarite separation. We find that there were so many rituals attached to this Nazarite separation. But now to those of us who are living in the New Testament age and who are not Jewish people, we need to understand this in a spiritual manner. God does not expect us to follow this Nazarite separation today. But God has recorded it in the word of God so that we may learn from it and we may learn the principles of the Nazarite separation so that we can live separated lives unto God. So now during this session, we are going to meditate a little deeply on these eight verses. We are going to look at three principles that govern the separation. Remember once again, I am telling you, we are not to follow the Nazarite separation, but we learn the principles of the Nazarite separation. So the first thing that we see in this passage about the Nazarite separation is that it was a personal decision. Now I want you to look into your Bible and mark these words in your Bible or at least to mark it on your notebook. See the word themselves in verse 2. Middle part of verse 2, separate themselves. Then the last line of verse 2 again, it says, "Separate themselves." Then look at verse 5. It says in the middle part, "Separate himself." Then verse 6, first part. Separate himself. So there we find the emphasis is given for a personal decision in relation to separation as an Nazarite. So dear brothers and sisters this morning, this is what we need to understand about the price of separation. Separation is a personal decision. Separation cannot be forced upon you by anyone or anything. Neither can you force and enforce separation on someone else. Separation is purely a personal decision. You need to look at this subject of separation. You need to consider the facts. You need to count the consequences of separation. You need to understand the gravity of separation. You need to understand all the challenges of separation. And you need to have a very good knowledge of separation. And finally, when you are convinced this is it, then you have to make that personal decision to be separated unto God. If separation has been forced upon you, dear brother, dear sister, that separation is not worth it at all. Unless that separation, that urge, that need, that desire comes from within and it is a personal decision, separation will not be a separation. Last morning under the heading, the preciousness of separation, we saw that God is prescribing separation to us. And God will help us to perform that separation. God also purposes that separation. But nowhere do we find in the word of God, God enforcing forcefully making us to be separate in that manner. And dear brothers and sisters this morning, we are doing the same. Through this youth camp, we are trying to teach you the lessons of separation. We are informing you of separation. We are educating you of separation. We are encouraging you for a life of separation. We are helping you to think about separation in a deeper manner. Taking it from God's word, we are bringing about the lessons and the teachings and the principles of separation so that you may be well aware of what separation truly is. And we are making use of this opportunity that God has given to you and me to consecrate our lives today to God to live a life of separation for him. But please take this to heart. In no way are we imposing this separation and enforcing it in your life. The final decision is in your hand. You need to call the shots. You need to make the decision. But in order to make a wise decision. We are helping you in this manner through this theme of this youth camp to make a right decision. So this morning, dear brother, dear sister. The option is up to you. Through these messages, through this youth camp, God is stressing the need of separation in your life. God is informing you, educating you and encouraging you to live a life of separation. But how many of you seated here are going to make that wise, important, crucial decision during this camp? Even up to this very moment, we have given you many an opportunity to re-surrender your life to the Lord Jesus. Consecrate your life to the Lord Jesus to live a life of separation for him. But have you made use of that opportunity? Have you held on to the opportunity that God has given you today to make a right decision to live a life of separation for him? Remember, God never forces us to do anything. The Lord Jesus only knocks at our hearts door and it is up to you and me to open it for him. How many of you have seen that painting, Jesus knocking at the door? Can I have a show of hands? How many of you have seen that painting? Jesus carrying a little lamb in his hand, then his staff is there, he is knocking at a door that is closed. Now I don't remember all the minute details of that story, but it goes on like this. The painter who painted that picture, put it on an exhibition and invited people to come and view the exhibition and a chief guest also was invited. So the chief guest went around looking at all the beautiful paintings by this painter and he came and stopped at this particular painting where Jesus is knocking on the door. And looking at that painting for a while, he, he was thinking something deeply. So the painter looked at the chief guest and asked, "Sir, why, why are you staring at this for so long?" Then the chief guest said, "This picture is a very meaningful picture, but I think there is a little mistake in this picture." The Lord Jesus is knocking on that door. But there is no handle, no lock outside in that door. Then the painter answered. He said, "Yes sir, deliberately I did not put a lock outside." Because the latch, the lock is inside. The Lord Jesus will not force open the door. He will not break open the door. But he will knock at the door. But you are inside. The handle, the latch is from me within. It's up to you to hear the knock and to open the door and invite the Lord Jesus into your heart and life. It is the same this morning, dear brother, dear sister. God is knocking at your heart's door, asking you to live a life of separation for him. But are you going to make that personal decision this morning to open your heart's door and say, "Yes, Lord Jesus, I surrender my life to you to live a separated life for you?" So the first thing that we learn about the price of separation is separation is a personal decision. And in all humility, I humbly plead with you, please make this decision while you are in this camp. We are moving on to the second aspect. Separation is a personal denial. Here in this scripture that we read in Numbers, chapter 6, 1 to 8. In the Nazarite law of separation. The things that had to, the Nazarite had to be separated from was somewhat clearly defined and categorized. But when we talk about separation in the New Testament.
Aite krotanibandana kalamalo prachakekadu guarchi mana martladutunapudu.
The New Testament scripture does not very specifically give us a list of things that we need to deny and be separated from.
Ee sangatalanu upexhinsevali, vidichpettukavali, pratyekinskavali, avy eme mitane visyani guarchina tantu vyvarana, krotanibandana vaakhyalalu mana kevobadaledu.
But instead of giving us a clear cut list, a category as to what we need to be separated from.
Mana waitinunchi vercheskavalo, upexhinsevalo, aa watin guarchina vyvarana puirtiga evodaniki badulga.
It allows us to make a personal denial of what and what we are going to deny in our separation.
Mana prachakekadu jeevutamulavu, waiti waitini mana upexhinsevala, nevi vikthiga thanga, mana me parishilinsi chuskoedaniki avokashmistunadaina.
Dear brothers and sisters, I do not know what God is demanding in your life for you to be separated from this day.
Priyamanasahodara saodhary nej jeevutamulonunchi, nevun waitini upexhinsevalane prabhu adeshistunadu nej jeevutamulavu waitinunchi pratyekinskavali sunavu nakthaledu.
The things that God wants you to deny in your life will not be the same things that God wants me to deny in my life.
Nej jeevutamulavu waitini upexhinsevalane, vidichpettukane, pratyekinskavali devudu khortunadu na jeevutamulavu waitini vidichpettu upexhinsevalane, pratyekinskavali khortunadu, avy samananga undu.
And the things that I choose to deny in my life of separation for God, I cannot force it upon any one of you.
Na jeevutamulavu waitini vidichpettu upexhinsevalane, pratyekinskavali devudu khortunadu aa visyalanu guarchi balavantanga nevunene mey meeda watne rudhano miru chayamani nochapagaluva.
Just as separation is a personal decision, separation is a personal denial as well.
Prachakekadu nevi puirtiga vikthiga thamene thirmanamaga elagu undu, aderithiga prachakekadu nevi swayam upexshavikthiga thanga chayali.
So this separation is between you and God.
Kabati prachakekadu nevi ney kunno devaniki majja jarige prakriya.
In the holy presence of God, you need to decide and deny what and what you are going to deny in your life of separation.
Parishududaina devane saniyamlo, eme vidichpettukavalo, pratyekinsabana jeevutamukoruke neve thirmaninskavali.
Dear brothers and sisters, what is it that the Lord wants you to deny in your life, to live a life of separation for God?
Devanukoruke pratyekinsabana jeevutam jeevinchidu koruke nej jeevutamulavu waitini vidichpettukaman aynakhorutunadu.
Let me once again emphasize this fact to you.
Marakxari sachyani ney ko vyvarinsakhorutunadu.
This denial is going to be different to each other.
Ee upexshavidichpettukodamanevi, andar jeevutam lokalaga undadu, vettiyasamu tharathamyaluntai.
According to your age, according to your spiritual understanding and level, according to your circumstances, this denial is going to be varied.
Ee upexshavidichpettukodamanevi, nevayasme dadarpadutadi, ney atmeyamena stithigatalu, antastalu, paristithalani bate dadarpadutuntundi.
So don't go around trying to compare your separation with one another.
Kabati nu prachekinsukune visyalu, thoiti varato, sare polchukune, neelavunai, varalavunai, neela polchukuntu veladamanchidukaadu.
I don't do this, but look at this man, he is doing that.
Kab ney ipanjastunam, ee vektenti ipanichetamledu, ananodu.
No, no, separation is a personal denial, it is a, it is a transaction between you and God.
Ledeledu, prachakekadu nevi puirtiga swayam upexshav, adi ney kunno devanikini majja jarigetwanti prakriya matrame.
But this morning as we speak about the personal denial.
Yodekalum prachekinsabana jeevutam swayam upexshani martladutunapudu.
From this passage of scripture that we read.
Manan chedu ney ee vaakhy bagalalu.
We are going to derive three areas of denial.
Upexhinsevalasana modu stalalu, pradeshala guarchi ekadu manan chustam.
Now that I have not given in your note.
Watin guarchi mey kevobadana postukamalu mey mu mey kevoledu.
Now you need to take that, near that second point, personal denial.
Mey kevobadana note postgalu swayam upexshane dagira, ipudu chappobaya visyalu mira rasukavu.
Now we are going to look at what are the things that had to be denied?
Upexhinsevalasana, vidichpettavalsana, sangatalan tiku manan chustam.
What were the things that Nazarite had to deny?
Naziruchayabadina vikthi, waitini upexhinsevali.
And from that we are going to derive the principle, spiritual application and principle, what we also could deny.
Waitinunchi atmeyamena vidhanamalo mana jeevutan kanduvinsukune, manan kuda, waitini upexhinsevalo, watin guarchi manan talastam.
So now before we do that.
Danichedanikumundiga.
I am going to ask you to stand up.
Okxarimir paiklech nilabadalene khortunadu.
And take your Bible to your hand.
Bible mey chetoth tiskunandi.
Raise your Bible right up.
Bagapai keti unschendey.
And we are going to sing the Bible chorus.
Bible palavi padtam.
Yes brothers, can you please come and assist in singing the Bible chorus?
Andal lech nilabadandi.
Let us all stand up.
Mey Bible tiskunandi.
Put your Bibles up.
Bible paiketandi baga.
Because this is Bible study, so we need to read God's word and study.
Ee Bible padnam kabati Bible tiskune devanu vaakhyamanu dyaninsali.
Now I am trying to learn to sing the Bible chorus in Telugu.
Nevun kuda Bible palavi Telugu lo paddaniki neersukuntanu, prayatanjastunadu.
Okay. Patimpa sresta granda mobile. Patimpa sresta granda mobile. Manu dinam patinchina prema todanadupulu. Oh, patimpa sresta granda mobile. The best book to read is the Bible. The best book to read is the Bible. If you read it every day, it will help you all the way. Oh, the best book to read is the Bible. Dunya me sabse pyare pustak mobile. Dunya me sabse pyare pustak mobile. Oh, muskarosvaro, samne katra koi na ho. Oh, dunya me sabse pyare pustak mobile. Vasika siranda pustakam vedam. Vasika siranda pustakam vedam. Anradalne vasitalkunramal nadatume. Oh, vasika siranda pustakam vedam. Kindly be seated. Okay, now turn to Numbers chapter six.
Sangkyaakanda maravadyam tiskundam.
Now we are going to consider what are the things that the Nazarite had to be separated from and deny.
Naziruchayabadina twenty vikthi, tanajeevutamulavu upexhinsevalane, vidichpettavalsana sangatalan tinte.
The first thing is found in verse three, now look into your Bibles.
Mey Bible terichcha chodandi, modetika tanu upexhinsevalasundhi, moodava vachsnamalu manan chustam.
The Nazarite had to stay away and deny taking in wine, strong drink.
Naziruchayabadina twenty vikthi, draksharasamunaga ne, majjamunaga ne, mutta kodudu.
Now I do not understand why God had to say all these to the Nazarite.
Indukunku naziruchayabadu varaniki, vannide devu chepedu, aniduniyana ardam jescuotamledu.
But somehow God told the Nazarite, you should not take strong drink, no wine.
Aite naziruchayabadu vikthi ke chala thaitaga chepedu, nevun majjamunaga ne, draksharasamunaga ne, traga kodanadu.
And today literally taken, no wine is good for us.
Kabdi rozana aksharanasaranaga tiskunte, majjabanamu manchidukaadu manuki.
Now don't say that Paul told Timothy to take some wine.
Kabdi Paul lo Timothée damartladu, konshundraksharasam puchkodam manchidanadu kada, mira anakanda mata.
Timothy had a stomach problem.
Indukanti Timothée ke kadupulajab bundhi, andukke tiskoman chepedu.
If you follow Paul's advice to Timothy to take some wine.
Paul lo Timothée ke draksharasan tiskoman chepedu kada, aa suchana gankamiru partinsalankunte.
You will end up having stomach disorders every day and you will need three shots of wine every day.
Prathirozalaga tiskuntubode, kadupunapekuvaytadu, jabpekuvaytadi, prathirozana modu tiskavali.
I came from an Anglican background.
Anglican, venikadi cheritramunchi nevunchenu.
I was confirmed in the Anglican church.
Anglican church sangani kene samvandinsinavadu.
You know what I used to do, I used to go for the early morning service.
Odekalapu jarige aaradhana karikramalikene hazrayavadu.
To take communion.
A prabhu balalo palu bundatani.
You know why?
Indukko telasa?
Because there they bring Australian grape wine.
Odekalapu jarige aaradhana samyamalo prabhu ballamaydunche draksharasani, Australia deshamununche varu digumadijesukunavu.
Because those days I used to take alcohol.
Adinalalu nevun majjani savinchalavatu kaliginadu.
Early morning I go for the Sunday service to have a shot of Australian grape wine.
Odekalabharadhana samyamikindikavillavadnante, Australia lo thayarijesna draksharasani savinchalane aashutavillavani.
And there the priest will bring that cup and will keep it near your lip.
Agadayaasukudu, oka patralo draksharasan tiskunochi, moodik dagiraga bettevaru.
And to make sure that it doesn't spill over you, you need to give a little support from behind of that cup, that wine glass.
Aikane ko vasanna ruchya andrutundaledu telskoodaniki, aginaduguna, padogaunatundaka, mattu bagam kuda untundi.
But my, myself and my group of friends, what we do is, we give a larger push from behind so that we can take in more wine.
Kandenu naatoduna saodharu lo enjeshavalu mantey, aginana konshukindunuchin netutadu undavalu, konshimekko laopalakostadani.
Such a kind of nasty fellow I was.
Alanti chedu jeevutalu jeevinchinitu antuvaru.
But now coming back to the story, the Nazarite was told not to take wine.
Ipuduna naziruchayabadu vikthi, majjani draksharasani traga vadu, anichepina paristithi kamanavaste.
And today to us to be separated unto God, what does wine and strong drink speak to us?
Erozana devanukoraku pratyekinskavali manan pilobadutunapudu, majjamu draksharasam traga valudante, atmenga mana kelagana vinsabadutundi.
We have a reference to wine in Psalm hundred and four, verse fifteen.
Draksharasani guarchi, notan nalgu kirtana, padihara vachsnamalu, kavachinam raibadindi.
Psalm hundred and four, verse fifteen tells, wine that rejoices the heart of man.
Notan nalgu kirtana, padihena vachsnamo, narla hurdayamu santhoshepettu draksharasamo.
And in the Bible, wine denotes joy and pleasure.
Bible lo draksharasamani santoxani saukyani mana kuchupistundhi.
So this morning as we consider the first thing that the Nazarite had to deny.
Yodekalu manan dyanistunam, naziruchayabadu varu upexhinsevalasana modeti sangati.
Which is wine, strong drink.
Draksharasamo madhyamo.
The spiritual application to you and me today is that we need to deny worldly pleasure and joy.
Atmeyamena vidhanamalo mana jeevutanikuvatna anuvinsukavalsunapudu, adi elag kanabodutundante, lokasambandamena santoshani saukyalanu manu upexhinsevali.
So in your note you can write wine, Psalm hundred and four, fifteen, worldly pleasure and joy.
Mekevobadana note postgalu rasukundi, kirtanalu notan nalgu padihena rasukundi, danaprakana lokasambandamena santoshamo saukyalu upexhinsevalan rasukundi.
That is the first thing you need to deny.
Nevupexhinsevalasana modeti visyamadi.
Dear brothers and sisters, if you and I need to live a separated life unto God, we should be separate from worldly pleasure and joy.
Priyamanasahodara saodhary, manan devanukoraku pratyekinsukavalsana jeevutamo jeevinchidani thirmaninsukunapudu laukikamena twenty santoshasaukyalunuchima manu verjeskavali.
What are the things in your life that brings you pleasure?
Nej jeevutanikisaukyamo santoshani tiskunochuchunavisyalan tinte.
What are the things in your life that makes your heart to rejoice?
Nevurdayani santoshaparichetwanti visyalu evunaini jeevutamulavu.
Are they the things of the world or are they the things of the Lord?
Laukikamena visyalu nevurdayani santoshipadutunaya, leka daivikamena visyalu nevurdayani santoshipadutunaya.
There may be so many things in this world that can gratify you and bring you pleasure and joy.
Nevurdayani ki ananda ni santoshani, ulasani tiskunoche, aneka visyali lokamalu unai.
And that will also differ from person to person.
Avi kuda oka vikthi, oka vikthi ke vaivive bindanga untai.
But this morning in the presence of God, you need to inquire from your life and see what is it that the Lord is talking you, talking to you about?
Aite yodekalu nej jeevutanne parikshinchidu chuskoene, waitinugurchi upexhinsevalane to chepunadu, nevumotukune valochana chayali.
What is the thing of the world that brings you pleasure and joy that you need to deny in order to live a life of separation for God?
Devanukoruke pratyekinsabana jeevutam jeevinchidu koruke, nevurdayani laukikamena visyalu, eyewe nekusantoxam ulasani kalipistunaya, watne upexhinsevali.
Let me give you a simple example, a very simple example.
Chala sammanyamena udaharanane ney mikavali khortunadu.
Sunday is a holiday.
Adiwaramo selavadinam.
And I am sure the boys would like to go for a cricket match or a rugby match or a football match or whatever it may be.
Abail avanasaladu waro selavadinankanka cricket aadanku, rugby aadanku, ithramena cradle lo paulupundedaniki velalane aashuntundemi ko.
And since India is cricket crazy, I am sure you would, you wouldn't mind playing a match on Sunday.
Kabdi Bharati lo cricket aade visyamalu, chusche visyamalu, chala makko galavaru, miru kuda alantu varan nakthalesu.
That would give you much joy and pleasure.
Alagu chuchi aadadu manedi, hurdayani ki ulasamo santoshani tistundhi.
And maybe for the girls, it might be like going on a shopping spree. Shopping spree, shopping.
Ammai lokvela selavadinankabati, shop samte, shopping chedaniki veladaniki, mey ko bhausha ulasamo santosham kaliginsavu.
To check out all the sale items during this holidays.
Ee selavadinalu krotthava eyvaytavuchayavane choodala, konukavala, nipistadi.
Buy one, get one free.
Ogadikontey ogadu uchidamane ninadamuntundi.
Big block letter, seventy percent off, seventy percent sale.
Etebe the boards bedta untaru, seventy percent off rate listunam tiskundani.
But the sisters are blinded that, under that there is a little sentence which says, conditions apply, over five thousand purchase only.
Aite saodharil kunusalalu chodukunda veliputaradabbe, shatamo, mey karaayatistunam, manan veliputaragani, krinda, chinnakshraltarayabadu.
Now if.
Sharatalu varitistai, ayidu velipetukuntene uchidamantadu.
Now if those are the things that are going to bring you pleasure on a Sunday.
Adiwarapudinanna mana kusantoxamo kaliginschetwanti visyalu vanni.
Maybe the Lord is talking to you and saying, you need to deny those things and take pleasure in me.
Prabhu neetogalamartladutunte, nekulaukikamena santosham tetchi, vitannitne vidichpetti, na enduni vananinsalane prabhu neetamartladutunadu.
What is more pleasurable for you? Is it to going for a cricket match or is it going on a shopping spree? Or is it coming to the house of God and worshiping the Lord and fellowshiping with the people of God?
Cricket match aadam velaniki nekusantoxamo, shopping chedam santoshamo, leka mandiranakochi devane prajalato sahvasan anubuvinci prabhu na aaradhinsedam, nevurdayani ki ulasamo santoshamo, eyede pramukhyam.
What gives you joy and pleasure in your life on a Sunday?
Pradaduwaram prabhu dinanna nevurdayani ki ulasamo santosham kaliginsche visyaminti.
This is a simple example that I gave you.
Edi chala sarosadharanamena udaharanane ney mikistunadu.
I am sure by now you know what I am talking about.
Ipudene nevumartladutunadu bhausha ipudike miru grahinsuntaru.
The Lord Jesus may be pointing his finger at different areas in your life which bring pleasure and joy to you which are from the world.
Prabhu esukristu varu tanaveelu chupinchini hurdayani chupistu nevurdayani ki santoshamo ulasamo tiskunoche, laukikamena visyalu, palana palana, ayni kuchupistunadu ney nerugudunu.
So the first thing that you need to deny is the pleasure of this world.
Nevo upexhinsevalane, vidichpettukavalsana modeti visyamintante, laukikamena, ananda, sukasantoxalo.
The pleasure.
Saukyamo.
Now let us look at the second thing that the Nazarite had to deny.
Naziruchayabadu varu upexhinsevalasana rindava visyamu.
In verse five it says, the Nazarite, the man had to grow his hair and not cut and shave.
Ayidavachnamalu manan chustam, naziruchayabadu varu tanatalavintrakal penskavali, watni katrinsevalkodudu.
Today, growing hair for men has become a fashion.
Ee rozalava abail talavintrakal penskodamanevi, fashion aipendi.
Sometimes men can grow hair longer than the length of a woman who can grow her hair.
Kunisandarbal ammai lakantay abailay, juttu aalakantay ekuga penskodamalavatayndi padoga.
But God told the Nazarite, your hair should be grown and no razor should come upon your head.
Aite prabhu naziruchayabadu varaniki chepedu, talavintrakal penskavali, showeramu chenskavalkodanadu.
Now what does that speak to us today as a relevance to us spiritually?
Erozatmenga mana jeevutalka anuvinsukodaniki, edi elagu sarepotundhi manuki.
In the first book of Corinthians, chapter eleven, verse fourteen, we read.
Madhikorinti padrika padukundavadya, padnala vachsnamalu manan chadutamo.
That nature itself says, long hair is a shame for a man.
Talavintrakal penskodamanevi, avamana karu manu raibadindi.
So just taking that verse, I am trying to build up something.
A vachsnanu tiskune konthanene mey kevalanikhorutunadu.
So the second thing that we need to deny is.
Mana upexhinsevalasana rindava sangatintanante.
Worldly practice
लाउकेकसम्बंधमेना अभ्यासमलो अलवाटलो
Worldly opinions
लाउकेकमेन अट्वंटी उद्देशालु आलोचनलु
Worldly norms
लाउकेका परमेन अट्वंटी नियमन निबंदनलु
Because the Nazarite, when he grew his hair people were looking at him and asking, "What is this man? You're growing your hair like a woman?"
एंदुकंटे नाज़रूचे बन्ना व्यक्ति तलविंट्रिकल पेंसकुन्ना पुड़ो ओके वेल एवरेन व्यक्तिन चूछे एंटी स्त्रीलागो नेव तलविंट्रिकल पेंसकुन्ना नव अम्मायलागन अडुतरो
And he would have to say, "No, I'm growing my hair because I have consecrated my life to God"
अपुड़ अडिगिना पुड़तान जवाब एलागो चेप्तद लेदु लेदु ने नाज़रूचे बन्ना वाडुनो अंदिके ने ना तलविंट्रिकल पेंसकुन्ना नान्तैडो
People will ridicule him, fool him, laugh him, scorn him
प्रजलो आव्यक्तिन चूछ आपोहासन जस्तारो, हैलन जस्तारो, दूशस्तारो, नवतारो
So, that is bearing the reproach of Christ as well
अदि देनिके गुर्तुगा उन्नंटे कृष्ट कोरको निंदनो अवमाननी बरिंस्टम
So the second thing that we need to deny in our lives of separation is worldly practices
मन जीवितालो प्रत्येकिंसबन्ना जीवितामो जीविंच्डको रके मनम उपेक्षिंसको वालसन रिंडवा दी लाउकेक सम्बंधमेना अलवाटलो
Dear brothers and sisters, if you want to live a life of separation for God you cannot practice all that the world does
प्रत्येकिंसबन्ना जीवितामयन कोरको नो जीविंच्डलेंटे लोकम एदैत अभ्यस्तुंदो दानी नेव अभ्यासम चेकोड़दो
You cannot do anything and everything that your friend outside does
कृष्ट को वेलपटुन्ना नेस्नेतेडो चेसे दंता कोड़न नेव चेडानिके विल्लेदो
All that the worldly people practice without a conscience, you cannot practice in your life
मनसाक्षी लेकुंडा लाउकेकमेन सम्बंधमेन व्यक्तिलो चेसे अभ्यासलनी कोड़न नेव चेकोड़दो
If you want to live a life of separation, dear brother, dear sister you need to deny all worldly practices
प्रत्येकिंसबन्ना जीवितामो जीविंच्डलेन आशु ने कुन्नट्लैते लाउकेका परमेन आचारालु अलवाटलो अभ्यासल विडिच्चे पेट्टोकोड़ा निकी तेरमानिंसको वाली
You cannot think, you cannot talk, you cannot behave like the worldly people do
लोकस्तलो प्रवर्तिंस्नेटलगा माट्ले डिनेटलगा आलोचिंस्नेटलगा नेव चेकोड़दो
That is denying worldly practices
अदि लोकसम्बंधमेना अलवाटलो आचारालु उपेक्षिंस्टमंते
Let me give you very simple example to clarify this point
मरका सामान्यमेना उदाहरण मेक चेप्पलनी कोर्तुन्ना नो
For those of you who are studying and doing exams
आया एग्जाम्स कोरके चद्वी रास्तुन्ना टुन्नै टुन्टी मेरो
The worldly practice is, "Don't study, you can copy"
लाउकेकमेन अट्वंटी पद्धत लिंटे एंच अदवालसन नवसनु लेदो एग्जाम्स टाइमलो कापीकोड़ते सरिपोत्दी अंटैरो
Have you copied in exams?
नेव एग्जाम्सलो चूछ रास्यवा कापीकोट्टे वा
I have copied in exams
नेन कोड़ा कापीकोट्टे नो
If they don't give the paper, that is the end of that person after the exam
आव्यक्तिगानिके ने नाडकगाने पेपर यवकपोते एग्जाम इन्तर रवते वाडी पनुंडेदी
We had a group of guys who will not allow them alone
मालो कोंतमंदी गुम्पलो मास्नेतल उन्डेवारो वाडन एलागो उडिच्चे पेट्टे वालु कादो
Before the exam, we say, "Once you finish your script, pass it on to my desk, otherwise you are done"
नेन चेप्पे वालुम एग्जाम नुरायगाने नेयानसर पेपर माकंद्र कंदिंसाल लागपोते निसंगति चूस्तान जागर्ताने वालुम
The worldly practice will say, "You can copy and pass your exam"
लोक पद्धत लिवी मीरे चद्वालसन पन लेदो कापीकोट्टे ने चालु एग्जाम पास आयपोतर अंटै
But if you want to live a separated life for God
आइते देवन कोरको प्रत्येकिंसबन्ना जीवितामो जीविंच्डलेन आशुस्कुंड
You cannot practice the worldly way of copying for exams but you need to work hard, study hard, and with the help of God, you need to pass your exams
लाउकेकमेन पद्धतलो वाडी कापीकोट्टी परिक्षल रायकोड़दो कस्त बड़च चद्वाली, प्रयस्प बड़ली, प्रार्थन जयाली, देवन में दादार बड़ली अलागो रायाला परिक्षलो
And to those of you who are working
एवरेते पन जेस्तुन्नारो अलांटी वारो
It is a very common practice in the world you go late to office and yet you put your time as eight o'clock you are in office
लोकमेन पद्धत लिंटे नेकिस्तुमच्चन अबड़ वेल्ली नेव ओच्चैन्ले हाज़र आयले ने चेप्पे संतकम पेट्टे चाल अनुकुंडरो
Or you can take things home from office, the pens and rulers and stationery and other things
कोंतमंदी ऑफिसलो उन्डेट्वंटे पुस्तकालो गानी, पेनलो गानी, रकरकालो वस्तु सामग्री इंटिक तेचेस्को वच्चल अनुकुंडरो
People of the world will say, "Oh, that is just normal use" "These are anyway, we are entitled for this" "So what is it if I use it in the office or home? Still I am going to use it"
लोकस्तल अंटरम ऑफिसलो उन्टे इंटलो इंटे अकड़े ने नो वाडेदे अवे इंटलो कोड़ा वाडुकुंडनान एवुन्नले एवनी चेट्टमल अंटैरो
But if you want to live a life of separation for God
देवन कोरको प्रत्येकिंसबन्ना जीवितामो जीविंच्डलेन नेव कोर्ते
Dear brother, dear sister, you cannot indulge in those practices
प्रिमन सहोदरडा सहोदरी इलांटी अभ्यासालो मनम पालू पुंडकोड़दो, चिकुको कोड़दो
If you go late to office, you need to put down the time that you entered the office premises
नेकार्यालायनिके लेट्गे वेल्लते कच्चतंग एटायन कोच्चे ओ आटायम अकड़ रायाली
Office stationery, office items are solely for the use at the office and not in your private homes
कार्यालायनिके सम्बंधिंसन वस्तु सामग्री अंत ऑफिसलो पन जेस्यपुडे वाडलगानी अविन्तिक तेच्कुन उपेक्षिंसको कोड़दो
And this is your separation
इदि नेप्रचेकत
And when you do like this
नेव एलागो एप्रेते चेस्ताओ
You will have to bear the reproach of Christ
कृष्ट कोरके अवमानमो निंदनो बरिंसाली
Your friends and colleagues will make fool of you
नेस्नेतलो सहज्जोगलो नेन वेरिवानिका चूस्तारो
They will call you a religious fanatic
वारो आत्मेमेना मत सम्बंधमेना निष्ठगल वाड़ अंटैरो
But that's all right because you have made a decision to live a life of separation for God
पर्लेदो वाडल एन्नन्ना पर्लेदो एंदुकंटे प्रवु कोरको प्रत्येकिंसबन्ना जीवितामो जीविंच्डको रकु नेव तेरमानिंसुन्नाव
So number one, you deny worldly pleasure
मोदेटिगा लाउकेकमेन सौक्यालन उपेक्षिंसाली
Number two, you deny worldly practice
रिंडवा दिगा लाउकेका पद्धतलो अभ्यासालन उपेक्षिंसाली
And then number three
मुड़वा दिगा
Verse six, number six, six
आर संकेकारणम आरवध्यायमो आरवा वच्चनम
There you find the Nazarite was told not to enter a funeral house even if it was his parents
इकड़ा चेप्पा बड़िंदे नाज़रूचे बन्ना वानी योक्का कुटुम्ब सभ्य लोकवेल तेलदंडलो वारो मरणिंस्ना कोड़ा वार समाधिक नेव हाज़र आवाद्दो डंटुन्नैडो
This was very strange
ई चाला क्रोत्तगा निपिस्तुंदे
During his time of separation as a Nazarite even if his parents' immediate family members died, he was not able to attend the funeral
नाज़रूचे बड़ने व्यक्ति नाज़रूचे बन्ना प्रक्रियलो उन्ना पुड़ो तन इंटिवारो कुटुम्ब सभ्य तेलदंडलो चेनिपैननो वार योक्का समाधिकार्यक्रमानिक वार हाज़र काकोड़दो
And today that does not apply literally to us
इद अक्षरानुसार ईरोज मनक एवे अनुवैंश्वड़ोड़म लेदीने
But the principle that we learn from there
आइता अकड़ नुच्चे मनम नेचुकुने नीमो मोकोटी उन्दे
The lesson that comes out of that is
अकड़ नुच्चे वच्चे पाटम इंटनंटे
That we need to deny worldly passions
लाउकेकमेन अनुरागालु बंधालन मन विडिच्चे पेटाली
When I say worldly passions, natural affections
सहजा सम्बंधमेना प्रेम, आप्यायता, मक्को, अनुरागाल विडिच्चे पेटाली
Relationships
सम्बंध बांधव्यालु
Our bonds
मन एका बंधालु
Dear brothers and sisters, if you and I want to live a life of separation for God we may have to deny certain bonds and relationships and affections and affiliations
नेव ने नो प्रवु कोरको प्रत्येकिंसबन्ना जीवितामो जीविंच्डको रकु तेरमानिंसुन्ना पुड़ो मन जीवितालो कुन्नी सम्बंधालु, बंधालु, बांधव्यालु, आप्यायतलु, अनुरागालु वेटिन्न उपेक्षिंसाली
Dear brothers and sisters, I do not know what are the affections, the passions, the relationships that the Lord is pointing in your life that you need to deny today to live a life of separation for God?
प्रिमन सहोदरडा सहोदरी देवन कोरको प्रत्येकिंसबन्ना जीवितामो जीविंच्डको रके नेजीवितामलो ए सम्बंधालु, ए अनुरागालु, ए बंधालु उपेक्षिंसमनी देवड़ कोर्तुन्नैडो नाक तेलेदो
What is it, dear brother, dear sister?
प्रिमन सहोदरडा सहोदरी नेव विष्यम एलागो उन्दे
What is it God speaking to you today?
ईरोजना देवन नेतमाट्ले ड़टुन्ना पुड़ो नेव एलाग कन्बड़तुन्नाव
Especially I am talking at this moment to those who are in marriageable age those who are in a love relationship
विवाह वैस कोच्चे इबुढिके मिलो चाल मंदी प्रेम सम्बंधमेना बंधाललो चिकुकुन्ना वार गुनिच्चने माट्ले ड़टुन्ना नो
Are you convinced in your heart, are you assured in your heart that this is what God wants you to do?
देवड़ो नेजीवितामलो इदि उपेक्षिंसालनी सलविस्तुन्नाडे नेव गुर्तिंसकल उतुन्नाव
Who is that person to whom you are feeling attracted to?
नेव आकृष्टिंसबन्ना व्यक्तुन्नाडे आव्यक्तितो नेके एव सम्बंधमेव मनकुंडनाव
Is that person according to God's perfect will? Is that person according to God's perfect will?
Neu evuto prema kalekalo unavo a vektini zanga divechitthana saramana vektina vektiga unadu.
Are you in a right kind of relationship?
Nu sariyainatwanti sakramana sambandabhandaviyamulone unav.
Are you sticking to the right boundaries of that relationship?
A sambandabhandavyaala chakkanis harihadalan airport jeskunav.
The world that we are living in now is such a filthy, polluted, dangerous world.
Prasada manu jivin chuchunayi lokam chala kalushitamana apavitraamana pramadakaramana paristhalu.
It is full of sexual impurity and pollution.
Langika paramina twenty apavitraatalu kalushitalu to nimpa badindi lokam.
Dear brother, dear sister, if you want to live a life of separation to God, you need to be separate and deny the worldly passions and relationships.
Premanasawada sawdharay pravukoraku protect in Sabana jyothamoo jivin shalana korthunapuru law kicka paramana sambandabhandavyalanii tegatempul jeskowali.
I cannot see through your heart, dear friend.
Ne hurdayani ne chodleni priyasneethu.
But while you are seated here this morning.
Eodekaalam ne kuda kurchni undaga.
The Lord Jesus can see through your life.
Pravu ne sukristvaru ne jyothani chustunaidu.
He knows what you are thinking right now.
Ne roz ipudikshanamalu eev alochistunav.
He knows what is on your mind right now.
Ne manasalo prasada mikshanamalo eemitaaradutundu nek telesu.
He knows whom you are attracted to right now.
Yavari kini vaakarshinshabaddavo prasada stithalo ayane kutelusu.
He knows the kind of bond and relationship that you are in right now.
Prasutamana ve sambandabhandaviyamalu chikkukunav ayne kubaga telesu.
He knows whether you have exceeded the boundaries or not in that relationship right now.
Nu sambandabhandavyaala konasagadani hadalu daati velipoyevanayne kutelusu.
And he is touching that area in your life right now.
Ne jyothamalu prasadam a kona nispurushistunadaina.
And if you feel convicted before God.
Devanidata opinsabadina varu anubhuti ne kalutundu.
Dear young person, dear friend, I humbly plead with you.
Premane avanasawada snaythada denamaga bretimalasunano.
If God is speaking to you and telling this is not right.
Idi kaadu sari kaadu ne pravu ne to martlaadutunte.
That you need to deny it.
E sambandani tegatempul jeskowali.
You need to leave it.
Neu dani vidichipetali.
You need to forsake it.
Neu upex since Ali.
You need to forget it.
Neu dani marichipovali.
You need to come out of it.
Neu akunichibaitikavali.
Dear friend, dear young person, today make that decision before God so that you may live a life of separation for him.
Yes, neethu da yavunastu da e terma nimi rozanu tisko tadvara devanakoraku protect in Sabana jyothamuno jivin shalav.
Please don't postpone.
Daichesita rawataku vaaydevayedu.
Surrender it to the Lord.
Devaniki appaginsukon.
Give it over to him.
Ayane kapaginsu.
He will give you the best.
Ayana migala panantachastadu.
Though there may be a heartache temporarily.
Ne ka taatkalekana konta bhaaga badanipishtadi.
God will give you the best.
Aite devu neku ottamana.
God will do the best for you.
Ne koraku sreestamana chastadu.
But you need to be willing to make that decision.
Aite terma nishkodaniki ne vestapadali.
So you need to do that personal denial of your passions.
Kabadi ne sambandabhandavyaala korakena twenty soyam upex nu chayali.
And we are coming to the third one and we finish now.
Muadavabaga ne kuchimana muginsukuntam.
The third aspect of the price of separation is it is a personal declaration.
Protecta jyothameka krayamune sirshikala muadavabaga menta ante adi vektiga ta prakatana.
When the Nazarite made this vow of separation.
Naziruchaybandatwanti vektina naziruchaybandina murukku baditaanu chesunapuru.
He could not keep it as a secret to himself.
Daanenu tanalone rahassenga unskodaniki villedu.
Immediately those around him knew that this man has made a commitment, this man is someone different.
Tanachutto unatuntavaru ventuna gurtistaro. E vektina naziruchaybandavadu vibinnanga unadene varu gurtinsakalutaro.
And this morning, if you make a decision to live a life of separation for God.
Eodekaalam devanakorake protect in Sabana jyothamoo jivin shudakoraku no terma nishkogale gite.
You are making a personal public declaration that you have decided to be separated for God.
Devanakoraku nevo protect in Sukunavane sangatene vektiga tanga bahiranga anga andari eduta nevo prakatinsuchunav.
Through your life and conduct of separation, people around you are going to notice it.
Ne jyothamudvara protect in Sukunana ne pravartana dhvara ne chutuprakala unavaru no protect in Sabana vane gurtistaro.
Your family, relatives, friends and colleagues and the world around you is going to take note of you as a consecrated separated person for God.
Nu protestinshabadina vane devanakoraku protect in Sukunana vektiva ne ne kutumbasabi luthis neethalu irugu parugu varu lokam sahujagalu andaragurtistaro.
And you cannot hide it from the world around you.
Nevo ne chutunala lokam dagarada nee maatika daachpetlevo.
This is the price of separation.
Idi prachekata jyotham yoka krayam.
Separation is a personal decision.
Prachekata nedi vektiga ta terma namu.
Separation is a personal denial.
Sa prachekata nedi swayam upex.
Separation is a personal declaration.
Prachekata nedi vektiga tamana prakatana.
But now as we close our eyes and pray.
Ebu manu kalumuskuni pradhana chaypotuntuka.
Are you willing to make that decision today?
E terma nimi roz tisko dani siddanga unav.
Are you willing to pay the price of separation?
Prachekata jyotham koraku krayamu chellinsidani kesiddanga unav.
Here shall we all close our eyes.
Andrum kalumuskundam. Mogrenshendi kalumuskundi.
Yes, everybody keep your eyes closed.
Daichesandaru mekandumuskunandi.
This morning, the Lord has been speaking to us.
Eodekaalam pravu manu to martlaadutuntuka.
He has been showing us our responsibility towards separation.
Pracheka jyotham korake mana badsheta ento ayana manu to martlaadutunaidu.
He has shown us the price of separation.
Protecta jyothameka krayanu gunichmanu to martlaadutunaidu.
Dear brother, dear sister, are you willing to pay that price today?
Premanasawada sawdharay e krayamuu roz nu chellinsidani kesiddanga unav.
This morning, in the presence of God, are you willing to make a decision and say, yes, Lord, I make that personal decision to be separated unto you?
Eodekaalam devanisandalo ne untrunduka. Avun pravu protect in Sabana jyotham jivin shudakorake nenu vektiga tamana terma namu tiskuntunana nenu cheppakalva.
Are you willing to say in the presence of God, I am going to deny the things that you demand from me?
Na jyothamulo evi upex since Ali ne vaadeshistunavu what ne upex since Koni vidichipetukodaniki nen siddanga unanenu cheppakalva.
And this morning, are you going to publicly declare that you are going to live a life of separation for God?
Eodekaalam devanakorake protect in Sabana jyothamoo jivin shudakoraku bahiranga nu terma nantisukunupragatishtunavane nu a terma nishkodaniki siddanga unav.
Yes, while all eyes are closed, while all eyes are closed.
Andrum kalumuskununtuka.
If there is anyone here who is making such a commitment this morning.
Ilanti terma namu odekaalam milo everena cheskuntunatleite.
Please put your right hand up.
Daiches kanbodlagana mekudiche paikethi chupande.
Please put your right hand up.
Daiches kanbodlagana mekudiche teni paikethi unshen.
And show that you are making that decision today.
E terma nimi roz mir tiskuntunadane sangatene mir chay paikethi chuputta dhvara telechendhi.
Do not be ashamed to make that decision.
Terma namu tiskodaniki sikupadavu daiches.
But today, the Lord wants you to make that decision.
E roz nenuv terma nishkualu ne pravukor.
He has brought you to this place to make that decision.
E terma namu tiskodaniki ayana istalani nen tisku nochedu.
He wants you to deny the things that the Lord has been speaking to you.
Devu ne to martlaadutochina vishyallalu nevo upex since Kovalasana vishyali ivani pravu ne to chupuntu.
And he wants you to declare it publicly.
Bahiranga nevo prakatinsalane korthunaidu.
Yes, is there any brother, any sister?
E sawdharudani sawdharigan.
Yes, thank you for raising your hand.
Me chedal paikethi chupinandu kondunav.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, dear sister.
Mundukarandi.
Yes, please, can you distribute the decision cards, please?
Sisters vai mundukarandi.
Yes, some sisters, can you come forward and look around? Please raise your hand up until you receive a card.
Meku terma nupatra mistaro. Card me dagaraku ochsevaru kumir chay paikethi unshen.
Yes, is there any other sisters here?
Inkayeverena sawdharilavai punara.
Any brother, please, any more brothers?
Sawdharilankayevereno nar.
Anyone who is making that decision to live a separated life.
Protect in Sabana jyothamoo jivin shudakorake terma nishkuntunavare inkayevereno nar.
Yeah, this is the last chance.
Chivara avakashamikistunam.
This is the last chance. Anyone else?
Idi chivara avakasham inkayevereno nar milo.
While we sing the first stanza of I surrender all, I want you to make a decision.
I surrender allene partlo modeli charanapadukuntum, terma nishkuntu pradhana vaikarillo maunanga undan.
As the group sings the first stanza and the chorus, I want you to say that as a prayer in your life.
Modeli charanamo pallavi padutuntuka. E partlo una padalu me pradhana gama hurdayamalo mir kaligundale ne korthunano.
Yes, please, keep your eyes closed. Everybody keep your eyes closed.
Daichesandru kalumuskunandi.
This is a solemn moment.
Chala gambiramanasammy midi.